Good evening. It's Tuesday, November 12, 2013, and this is the meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Welcome, everybody. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 22, 2013 regular meeting?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Laura. Any amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
At item 4.3, the -- okay, anyway, in the report on policy, the second sentence, "Special education policies identified by the district's internal auditors as missing or insignificant will be reviewed." I'm pretty sure insignificant was not the right word. It was probably significant. So that was my --
Okay, any other changes?
I have one. It's 4.1, a couple pages back, that top paragraph. Math curriculum has been challenging for some and will need to tailor accelerated math six and seven. We'll have to take algebra one. I think that's accelerated eight. All right, so I should say accelerated math eight.
Accelerated math?
Eight.
Eight, okay. Okay, any other changes? All those in favor of the minutes as amended? That's everyone except for me, and then I'm abstaining because I wasn't there. That motion passes. We now come to our part meeting for public comment. Would any members of the public like to speak? Okay, then we'll move on to reports and discussion. Our first item is Regents Reform Agenda Updates, and I'm going to turn that over to Superintendent Valen.
Sure, thanks, Deirdre. I placed that on our agenda this evening just as a placeholder to provide an opportunity to bring you up to speed on the developments that seem to be occurring with more regularity over the last number of weeks. And specifically of late, there has been, as I'm sure you've been seeing in the newspapers, a lot of discussion statewide and regionally regarding data, the security of data as it relates to the State Education Department's collection of that data and the involvement of a third party in Bloom, a not-for-profit that, as I understand it, that is storing or is arranging with the State Education Department to store the data that SED has been collecting for a while. Collecting data is nothing new in New York State, but the involvement of a third party is new. There are all sorts of nuances to the involvement of that third party, which I won't get into this evening, but quite a bit of concern in the field as to the security of that data, personally identifiable data, and a lot of questioning about that. As you're, again, probably aware from reading the newspapers and the Eclipse mailing that you get every day with the education articles from around the state, some school districts have taken to withdrawing from Race to the Top and forsaking their, the fourth year of their Race to the Top monies in order to protest. It's kind of tied in with another piece of the Regents Reform Agenda, although I would say a less significant piece than some of the other things that have been discussed statewide, like the Common Core. But there is a requirement under Race to the Top for school districts to choose a so-called data dashboard to provide access to staff, to community members, to parents, to certain types of data for decision-making and for informing themselves. The whole data dashboard process has now been pushed back, I think. The date of that has been pushed back, I think, three times, at least at this point. The latest deadline date is November 15, by which time districts are supposed to choose a data dashboard, one of three that's been made available by New York State, or else the data dashboard will be chosen for the district. And again, some school districts have pulled out of Race to the Top as a way of bypassing having to choose a data dashboard, which kind of links back to the original point I made about concerns about the confidentiality and security of data that's being stored by this third-party cloud. So we're, you know, we're at the point where we haven't withdrawn from Race to the Top. That's not something I'm recommending to the board. We do have a financial commitment for our fourth year of Race to the Top money, and we're about $13,000 this year. Some districts apparently are further south than us are getting a lot less than that, so for them it's financially not an issue. And superintendents that I've talked to have mentioned that their action withdrawing from Race to the Top is either a way to protest the bigger issue with the implementation of the Regents Reform Agenda in New York State, or because they already have their own robust data dashboards, and they feel that having another one from the state will be redundant. I mean, there are lots of reasons out there that school districts are giving for making the decisions they've made. I attended a meeting this past Friday morning down in Westchester that was attended by four members of the 17-member Board of Regents, and they met with the superintendents from the region as an opportunity to bring them up to speed on the thinking of the superintendents at this time. And one of the strategies that came out of that meeting is that some school districts who are not withdrawing from Race to the Top have made a decision to send a letter, again, as a protest, probably symbolic more than anything else, but to send a letter to InBloom requesting that their district's data not be stored in their cloud. Of course, the State Education Department is saying, "You can't do that. You don't have a choice." And they're saying, "We can't take anybody's data out of our cloud because our arrangements with the State Education Department, not with individual districts. So you can write all the letters you want, but we won't do anything." But just as another, you know, we talked about ways to make our thoughts known about some of this, and that's another way that doesn't remove the district from the Race to the Top monies that we've already committed this year, but would at least go on record as opposing the storage of our data in that third-party cloud. And as I mentioned to you via writing over the last several weeks, there are other ways, which include doing things that we've been working on and talking about doing, writing letters to the Commissioner of the Board of Regents. So there are a number of different strategies that districts are using to register their displeasure, in addition to other things that are happening across the state, like angry people showing up at some of the forums. That the Commissioner has been holding, you've been following that, and those of us who went to school boards were kind of late in the thick of all of that percolating. So anyway, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on where we're at with that. I asked Marvin Krebs to join us this evening, not to make any presentations, but since he's our district data manager, and I've asked him to attend the rollouts of the three data dashboards, that we're being asked to pick one of the three. He really has, technically speaking, he's got a much more granular understanding of what's available to us and what direction we may go in here within the next couple of days, so as to avoid having some bureaucrat in Albany decide, "Well, this is the one you're going to be stuck with." So he's here to answer your questions on that topic specifically, or anything else that's related to the Regents Reform Agenda. But I would just point out that the data piece is not an important piece of it, but it's only one of a larger initiative that, as I've mentioned to you, has, I believe, had been rolled out for implementation in so quick a manner as to really not have provided school districts the time and opportunity to do it right. I think everybody is kind of backpedaling now because we're in the middle of rolling out something that has really, we've been given insufficient time to do that. So I want to at least start the conversation here to bring you up to speed on kind of what the latest piece of this is, and there will be more in this whole thing with data security, based on our meeting with the Regents. In Westchester is, I think, just starting to pick up speed more than it has happened yet, so I think you'll be seeing more about that over the next few weeks or months, or whatever it takes to get that sorted out. So I don't know if any of you have questions for Marvin or for me, or comments?
Lisa?
Joe, can you address, and you have sort of glanced at me already, what the effect would be of any of the options that you've mentioned, withdrawing from Race to the Top, writing a letter, taking other forms of protest, on the actual requirements regarding the data dashboard and the implementation of the InBloom data collection?
Well, I'll take a stab at it, and I'll welcome my colleague to jump in at any point. But my understanding is that the only direct connection, at least that I've been able to ascertain, is between dropping out of Race to the Top and not having to pick a data dashboard. And again, I would submit that picking the data dashboard and the pantheon of requirements that we're faced with under the Regents Reform Agenda is relatively minor. And as I mentioned earlier, some of the districts that have gone that route have decided to go that route, not only to protest the, you know, the state's approach to collecting data and where that data is residing, but as much the fact that they already have robust data dashboards and they feel that that's a redundancy. Apparently, that's the only way that I have heard that a district doesn't have to choose one or have one chosen for them, as if you're not part of Race to the Top.
But to the extent that the concern is with the security of the data that InBloom is collecting and is going to store, would it be fair to say that none of the alternatives that you presented would really effectively shield or address any of the concerns?
That's my understanding. Even pulling out of Race to the Top, they still have, they being, the state still collects data and will continue to collect data unless something changes at, you know, at that, at the Albany level. But as best I can tell, doing any of those things isn't going to change the whole data collection, data storage piece. And that's, I believe, a decision that was made in Albany and would have to be reversed in Albany. Nobody came to the individual school districts and said, "Hey, would you agree to have that happen?" The State Education Department made that decision for everybody. And I think in one of these items that I gave you relative to that meeting this past Friday, the state's been collecting this data for years and years. That's just not a new thing. Now, will they collect more data? And there certainly is a concern that once this is set up and the third party is getting dated, that they're going to be, they being the State Education Department, require school districts to upload even more data. And we, I think Marvin could address the fact that he's seen over the course of not too many of the last few years, an increase in the amounts of data that are being pulled up there. And while I can't speak to this firsthand, I hear some of my colleagues in Westchester talking about, and don't ask me how they know, because I don't know how they know. I haven't heard this anywhere but secondhand, but they're concerned about the State Education Department starting to collect data on things like suspensions and, you know, less academic data than some other types of data that they're appalled, if it's true that that data's going to be stored someplace for who knows how long.
So if I could just inter for a second on there. Answer, you know, the FAQ part of Engage New York, they actually have a link to what data points they'll be asking for, and it does include suspensions, includes things like reasons for absences, not just number of absences, but reasons for absences. So in fact, you could look at that link, and you could find what data points are currently being, going to be, have opportunities for you to fill in for. So that information is there for us to know. I have a couple of questions actually on the process that, before we talk about maybe our feelings about whether we're concerned about it enough to take any kinds of actions, like letter writing or whatnot, just do we all understand this? Do we all understand what a dashboard is, and do we all understand what it means that the information is going to InBloom? So I actually do have a couple of questions, which is, one is, Marvin, if you could just help me understand, just answer that, like, information question. Does it look like it's more information than, or is it, what other differences would be that you would see between what we already give to the state and what we are now going to be required to give the state? And maybe there are so many, but I guess if it was something that you could sort of like enumerate, or just a sampling of the kinds of things that are different?
Okay. Well, I'll try to set the context for my response, because it's a larger set of questions. As of today, we do 19 imports into the State Education's, what's called, Level Zero Warehouse, okay? Then we clean and scrub that data as it comes into Level Zero, which Level Zero, you might think of it as a holding tank for data, right? So it comes out of your local student management system, and it goes into Level Zero. It sits there, and they make it available to my assistant and myself, as we're one of the two. And we then scrub and clean that data to make sure it's accurate, it matches what we reported. They send it up to what's called the Level One Warehouse, and that is used for a variety of purposes here in this local, that's called the Regional Information Center catchment area. That Regional Information Center is located at Ulster County Bosse's across the river, up there on 32. When that data is cleaned in Level One, you check all the reports, and goes up into something that's called the Level Two Data Warehouse. And what you might think of that as is the statewide data warehouse. That's where all 700 districts aggregate their data into one place, okay? Out of that Level Two Data Warehouse, they are going to create exports, and I would submit to you, they've already done that. They've exported a lot of this data into the InBloom server, which is yet another set of server farms that has a bunch of applications running against it to query it. Each one of these, if you want to call them data dashboards, will then be applications apps, as you might call it nowadays, that will then query into that data warehouse called InBloom. So that's how this whole thing is set up. We already report hundreds and hundreds of pieces of data into Level Zero, to the tune of 19 imports per year. And if you think about that in a four-week school year, that's about once every couple weeks, updating information. And sometimes it's all the data we report all at once, because they want to refresh it and keep it clean at all times. And so it's attendance data, it's enrollment data, it's student achievement data. Since the inception of Race to the Top, I would submit that the amount of data that we report has grown exponentially, because we now report what's called, through the teacher-student data linkage system, we link students to teachers to courses. So there's rosters that teachers have in courses. Let's say you teach English nine, you've got so many students in your class, we have to make sure that the right kids are linked to that teacher. And if that linkage changes, student moves out of the district, teacher moves out, and the teacher goes in, that has to be refreshed and cleaned up, because one teacher has to be exited, another one has to be entered, you know, and so on and so forth. So you can imagine the complexity of that, even in a small shop like this, over the course of a year. So to date, and I've looked at this document that you referred to up there, and I don't see anything more that we're going to have to report at this time than what we already report. The significant change is the data coming out of Level Two and being put into this third-party server farm for purposes of having these dashboards, be able to query that data to create, you know, what you might call fluid and dynamic reports against all that data, based on filtering systems that you would use to filter the data. Simple way of explaining that is, you know, I'm a teacher, back to English nine, I've got 20 kids on my roster, I log in with my password and my login, because it's password-protected. I see in my data dashboard, if I'm a teacher, my list of kids that are in my five sections, let's say, and then I've got historical archive data on that student, irrespective of whether we had that student in this district, or whether that student attended another school district, so long as we had that data collected at some point. Because that's, this pool at the statewide level collects information on kids from all over there, so it's all kind of a one-stop-shop data access. It is going to have suspension data in there, the way I read the dashboards and the way I saw them. The reason they're putting all that data in the system in that manner is because they want to create these, what are called, early warning signs that districts can set, sort of like thresholds for the student, that would early warn you if a student was at risk to not, I don't know, satisfy graduation requirements in high school, something like that. But again, I keep going back to this data that they're asking for now is no different than what we're reporting now up through the system, but the significant difference is, you know, the servers that sit over at Ulster Bosse's are Bosse's run servers, school employees run them, they're protected by people that we know and work with on a regular basis. They go up to, even after that, and they go into Level One and go up to Level Two. Level Two is still a state education managed system. The real significant policy shift, in my judgment, is moving it out of that Level Two system, out into InBloom's server farms. I think that you ought to really keep that clear, but that's the big difference, and I think that's what's stirring up a lot of concern. I would say this, though, about this data reporting thing. I, it was probably 2004, '05 issue, shortly after NCLV kind of ramped up, and they created this statewide data warehouse network with all these regional information centers all over the state. I'd say it was around '04, '05, '03, '04, somewhere in there. Went to my first data administrative meeting, I think we did four exports that year with just a few pieces of data. So now we're up to 19, and the data dictionary that I use to help me with course coding and descriptions and what to do when kind of things, that document is 300 pages long. It's just, it sits on my desk, it's one of my little libraries that I have to refer to. It started out as a little thin document, it had, I think it had 23 to 50 data elements in it, so. We live in a data-hungry world, and everybody's kind of enamored with this notion of meta-analytics and, you know, the right information at the right time to the right person for the right purpose, so that you can make, you know, nimble, quick agile decisions right in real time. And some of that makes a lot of sense, but there's also some risk out there that's tied to that that needs to be considered before we rush ahead. And some of this information wasn't exactly clear to us in the beginning, I think that's why it's kind of coming to your attention the way it is, because it's coming to all of our attention in that manner, quite frankly.
That does help, yeah. Are there other questions about the way that this process is going to work?
Ms. Speaker, I'm here, Marvin. What is the difference between what the state is using the data for now versus what they'll be, what if the InBloom decides it'll be available to everyone, but like, what are they doing with it now?
Well, they actually are trying to fix a real problem. So it should be noted that this, there is a real problem out there. The data that we have in the education business sits on multiple servers controlled by multiple different peoples, and sometimes I, you know, I have to go to one place to get information, and I have to log out of that place and go to another place, and then these two systems don't talk to each other well. So part of what the inception of this idea, what drove a lot of this idea, was, well, wouldn't it be nice if we could aggregate the most relevant data pieces on our students or on our schools and move away from, sort of back in, static reporting for accountability too late, long after typically we, you know, really need it. I mean, it's not really very helpful to get test data on a student on a third-grade ELA test, two months after the kid took the test, and the kid's long gone, and we're in the middle of summer, because that data just becomes useful for accountability purposes in some retrospective brick and work, but it's not really helpful in terms of informing instruction. So part of what they are trying to accomplish is to have useful warning indicators and information with regard to student performance, that we could then make instructional decisions and do, you know, hopefully, wise decisions in that sense. So one value add that they're trying to accomplish is now you'll have parents who can log in. So if you have son or daughter in the system, you'll be able to go in with this password and this login into the system, and you'll be able to see all the information on your student in the system, all right? The teacher will be able to do that, the principal will be able to do that, somebody like myself at the district level will be able to look at the entire school system. Of course, I can run some analytics against that, get some patterning, and look at where the trends are. And I mean, that's the thinking behind the way these systems are supposed to operate. So that's, I think, why it is so attractive to some educational planners and that. Now, in terms of our work here, most of the data that they're going to have on this dashboard, we have available to us now, and we make available to people on a as-needed basis when they ask us for it. It doesn't take us long to run it out of a couple of systems, put it in a form that's transferable, and send it to somebody using a simple tool like a potential tool email. I mean, we can send it pretty fast. But having that shared sense of access, where it was a parent, the teacher, the principal, the director, superintendent, wardner, as to that matter, looking at aggregate data for the schools, that kind of common way of accessing that information does not exist. So I think there's an idea behind this, that they want to try to build that out so that that access exists. Again, I would just say, in order to do that, there's a lot of compromising along with what to achieve those goals. I'm not sure they quite got through and made people aware of their stakeholders exactly what that means and how that's going to play out. And data security is a real thing. Anybody who's not, is in the data business and they're not concerned about data security, that tells me they don't really understand data management, because it's one of the biggest challenges we have. So it's a real thick -- I don't know if that gets you a question?
Diane?
Marvin, I guess to fill up on your question for your point of data security, I'm still confused about -- confused about two things. Is InBloom just the storage facility for all this? They're not doing the analysis? And it's not clear to me whether the information is more secure because it's in a data security company now that's encrypting it, and that's what they do, versus multiple different areas within a government-run department? I don't, I don't know which one I trust more. I mean, you could make an argument for either, and if our state education department thinks they trust a private IT company, then maybe that says something about their own security too. So I, I just don't know. I don't know if anyone has a real opinion about is InBloom, I think the question is, is InBloom secure enough? Is there any reason to think it's not? Or is it more secure than the data was before?
I'm not sure I could answer that question. What I do know is what I'm told. So sometimes I believe what I'm told, and I don't. You know, they double encrypt this data in their, in their servers. It sits on redundant server farms, so it's encrypted while it's in motion, so it's hard to get at, according to them. It's got a lot of firewalls, and it's password protected. That's pretty secure, according to them. But then they also have these little caveats, which, you know, I think they all have in these little systems, which is, you know, we, I can't exactly remember the codicil to the contract, but it was something like, we can't be held accountable for data breaches in the event that somebody accesses data and it gets used improperly. So I'm not sure why you'd add that to your, to your contract language unless you had some concerns yourself. But I think data security is a problem no matter where it's sitting. The one thing I would say, I have, I think I have good reason to trust Mindex because Mindex is a company that manages school tool, because I have direct interactions with them. I work with people at the Midas Regional Information Center that work with the backend programmers and sysops and product owners, so I know them by name. If I need to give them on the phone, I can talk to them directly. I think my biggest concern about InBloom is we don't know these people. We don't know who they are, we've never talked to their backend people, we don't know who works for them, we don't know who their product owners are, they've never come to like a regional meeting and said, hi, my name is Joe Smith, and I'm the product owner of this, and here's how we operate. It's, it's, it's not done that way. So the rollout with Mindex, for example, was, you know, he met with the product owner, the people who were the programmers, and the people who were going to manage the data cleansing and the process of coming out of one service system into another. We're sitting right there in the room while we're talking to them, and they're on the phone with us on regular meetings, what the state education department is asking us to do, but frankly, is to trust them to do that for you on your behalf under this Race to the Top contract. So I think, I mean, that's as best I have as an answer to it. Is it going to be safe or not? I don't know.
Deirdre?
One other question for you, Marvin. Could you give us your sort of professional viewpoint on FERPA and the kind of protections that FERPA offers and what will happen if InBloom's the data manager?
Well, again, I'm going to have to go with what we were told by the state education department when they were asked these kinds of questions, which is, the contract specifies that they have to be proper compliant. So hence this notion about double encryption, password protection, firewalls, redundant servers, and so on and so forth to keep the data safe so that, I mean, the essential purpose of FERPA is to say, listen, unless you've got an educationally, you know, valid reason to see data on students, you can't see it.
Yeah.
Simple as that. It's not really a complicated law, neither down. So can they make good on that promise? I don't know the answer to that. By contract, they're supposed to be able to, and, you know, Ken Wagner, who runs that shop up there, who's kind of running the lead on this for state, said, you know, they're prepared to take them to task for that legally if they don't make good on that promise. So again, I just fall back to the kind of same thing I said to you, which is, I think they're asking us to trust them that they can manage this for us.
Well, one thing we do know, and one thing I think that also makes people anxious, is that the, the company that runs the operating system for InBloom, Amplify, which used to be called Wireless Generation, is a subsidiary of the News Corporation. And the News Corporation, of course, is involved, I'm sure as all of you know, in the major hacking scandal in, in England where in fact they were using their electronic savvy to hack into private individuals' cell phones and email accounts throughout, throughout England, from the royal family to celebrities and what have you. So Joel Klein, the former commissioner of schools, superintendent of schools in the city of New York, works for News Corporation now, is the CEO of Amplify, which runs that operating system. So that's another sort of thing that people get when we say we don't know who it is. Well, in fact, if there's one little piece of information we do know, it makes people anxious about security when in fact News Corporation has broken the law in the United Kingdom repeatedly around this data security. So, but I guess another question I just have too, and I don't know whether you have information on this, Marvin, is that it's my understanding that, and from InBloom's own website, they say, "InBloom enables a wide range of applications to use student data more effectively and efficiently with the ultimate goal of unleashing innovation in the marketplace and making personalized learning a reality." So I think some of the concerns around data security aren't just about like breaches, but about this sort of creeping of using student data to enable, you know, you could put it one way, which is like products to be manufactured that then we will use to better our school systems, or to simply enable private companies to enrich themselves in what is a growing marketplace, and that is the Common Core agenda. So I'm just wondering, you know, if you've heard anything about that, that's not just about data breaches, but concerns about, you know, student data being used kind of in the marketplace?
Two things about that. When pushed, Dr. Wagner made very clear that this data wasn't for sale on the open market and that they weren't going to sell it to curriculum vendors or anyone else who had a capital's interest. Again, whether we believe that or not, that's what they're under contract to not do. So that's one thing. The other thing is the way the system is set up, the way the data dashboards that we mentioned. By the way, there are three of them. One's called Dedication, the other one is called MyTrack by eScholar, and the third one is a Pearson product, it's called SchoolNet. So there are three there. And so each one of them has their own different capacities, but they all, in the RFE, had to guarantee certain things. So one of the things that they're going to be able to do is to, based on academic history, behavioral profile, demographics, enrollment status, and so on and so forth, they have, you know, meta-analyst tools that will match that student to particular academic interventions, for example, or course materials that might be helpful to help that student be successful. So that, that kind of capacity exists to query that data. So in order to make those kinds of judgments about kids or groups of kids who might fit a particular profile, they don't have to sell that data out to somebody else. They're going to have four-plus million records in there to query and use for those kinds of purposes. And they do plan to do that with that data. Now, what they say is that's only going to be available to persons who would have an educational interest in that, and I'm told that we are supposed to have, that is, we meaning local school districts, are supposed to have the ability to control what those interventions look like on the dashboard and what's available. So, you know, if Pearson, CTV, Raw Hill, or Hoop and Mifflin, or any other curriculum provider out there in the marketplace wanted to sell stuff, we would be the ones that would put that into the dropdown menu that would be some choices for our people to use. So they're saying, at this stage of the game, the end users, I mean, districts, will control what shows up in there, if you follow what I'm saying. So I don't know whether that's going to happen or not. I'm told that the analytic tools that sort of underpin that are similar to the kinds of things that, I'm sure you're all familiar with this, if you want to buy a stationary bicycle, if you go out and go on Google and Google stationary bikes, and you get the top 10 list, and you click on that, very shortly after that, you're going to start seeing a bunch of advertisements for stationary bicycles popping up all over the place in magic places. Those are data analytic, meta-analytic tools that they've used. Well, the same kind of technology is built into this shared learning infrastructure at InBloom. The only difference is it won't be a stationary bike. It'll say, you know, you have, we're in attack problems, or fluency issues, or comprehension issues, and districts will identify particular learning tools that may be helpful in that case, and then those will show up in the teacher's login system. Think about it that way. That's kind of how it's.
Right.
But I would say this, this is one of my own personal, I don't know if it's right, it's not a proper, it's like this, but it's one of my complaints, is that we don't, we never got to use a sandbox to see how these systems are going to work. So we don't know. I'm standing here telling you things I got told. Because I, I never got a chance to go into the sandbox because the state prohibited these purveyors for giving sandboxes to all of us until after it blew off. So sandbox is when it goes live. Just a second.
Laura?
So I understand that the teachers can see that there's this cohort, and so now I'm going to see all of Hoop and Mifflin and Pearson's products that can address that issue. What about the parent experience? Are they going to have all of these wonderful products showing up when they go to check on their kids' grades or, you know, issues?
Well, again, we, we meaning a local school district, will control what shows up in the queue. If we allow that into the queue, we, whoever the backend system operator is for Rhinebeck Central Schools or any other school district, then in all likelihood, that would show up when you went in there for your student because we would have allowed it, we would have enabled that functionality. Because parents in this, in this system are what I would call a user class with permissions that have access to certain things. And that would be something that you would have access to if we elected to put it in there as a particular strategy to help that student. And it could be things like, I don't know, websites that would be helpful to go to to Americans, or Reading A to Z, which is an electronic leveled library system for students to read books on their own reading level, that kind of stuff. So if we decided to put that in there, then if you went in as a parent, you'd say, oh, look, you can go into Reading A to Z and read books on the T level, which will get you rights so that you can read the way through. So that's kind of how it's going to be set up, at least in the initial phases. Again, this is what I hold. I haven't seen this thing in action yet, so. Does that answer your question?
Other questions?
I guess I just have one other question. For these districts that have already data-managed systems that are considered robust or more robust than the norm, they, the argument is that they are not participating in the three data dashboards on offer because they've already got systems in place?
That's what I'm hearing at some of the meetings that I've been going to. They consider this redundant because they already have something that does this, so why, you know, their rationale is why be running two parallel systems that are doing essentially the same thing? I, I know that we don't have an eight-data dashboard that is capable of what these things supposedly are or are going to be, to be capable. But, you know, the things I'm hearing at these meetings, we already have that. We have to hire additional people to maintain two redundant systems, so that's a waste of our money, but, and again, that's just hearsay too, right? Don't know that for a fact, but I.
It's an argument.
Yeah.
Lisa?
Has a decision been made at the administrative level as to what data dashboard to adopt?
Yeah.
Which one? And why?
I'm gonna, I'll, I'll turn that over to my colleague. You know, Marvin went to the, even though he's not had an opportunity to play in the dash, in the sandbox, he did attend a rollout of each of the products, such as it was, and I think we can, we can proudly honestly say that it was, it was limited because in a perfect world, you'd get to play in the sandbox for a while and decide which one was most user-friendly or least clunky. So, but, you know, having to make a decision on what little we've, we've seen about it.
Well, I sat through the roadshow, as they call it, which is basically you walked into a room for a couple of hours, and each one of these presenters stood up and did a drop talk for 30 or 45 minutes of what these things are going to look like. And then in the data administrator crowd, which is a room full of, you know, almost a couple hundred people, you know, then the buzz starts, so we're all talking amongst ourselves, trying to figure out, okay, what does this do, and what does that do, and why should we pick this and not that? So you can imagine, Pearson's not wildly popular, because Pearson's not wildly popular. So I will tell you, nobody was really talking about what they were going to do with Pearson because most people's picking Pearson. And there's a long history to that, but part of the reason why they were upset with Pearson is because way far back when we all had to migrate out of SASE, and we were all supposed to go in from SASE directly into Power School, and they basically just cold-turkeyed everybody on SASE and said, now you have to go into Power School. And people who were in the data business had really long memories. And so they really ought not have done that to everybody because we all remembered it. And we all went, you know, that's crazy, and they'll probably do it to us again. There was a lot of that kind of talk. So some of this was the science of muddling through in some ways. It's like you've been around long enough, you kind of know who you want to do business with. I have friends who implemented fully Dedication, and I had one friend called Data Disaster because the implementation didn't go well, it was clunky. And that gets back to your question, I think, which is, many of these districts have already started using some of these products by going to contract with these companies. So like you could go to contract with Dedication, they'll, you can then take your data out of your system, your student management system, and put it onto their servers, and then they'll, they'll give you their dashboard. So I suspect that a lot of these districts in the lower region might have already gone to contract with eScholar or these other companies, Power School through, I guess they call it SchoolNet now, through Pearson. I like eScholar's product, MyTrack, for several reasons, and I'll tell you why. Number one is Sean Beg, who works there, has been in New York State since the inception of the data warehouse. All of his programmers and the people who do all the templates for the statewide data warehouse work at eScholar. So they've had the contract to run the infrastructure for the statewide data warehouse since its inception. So I like that because that means their programmers know how these systems operate, and so I anticipate the process being very smooth. And I had a long conversation with their product owner, which, by the way, you can actually talk to them, you can get one of their people on the phone, and have a like nice conversation with them about how they operate inside. And so I have a high degree of confidence that the system is going to work correctly. The second thing I like about it is that it's simple. The end-user interface, which is really important in these systems, has to be accessible to a person who doesn't have a master's degree in statistical analysis. With a lot of complex data analytic tools, people get confused and they just don't use them. So there's a real trick thing with this end-user interface. They have to be such that the end-user, it's kind of intuitive, they kind of, you know what you're looking for, you click on it. So typically, it's color-coded and icon-driven, and matches kind of your intuitive sense. So if this, if a kid has red flag, then guess what color the flag is? It's red. You think, I mean, you'd think that's funny, but that kind of simple kind of thinking in these systems really matters. And if you're looking at bar graphs that are very clearly delineated, you can see what you're looking at, so I like that. The third reason I liked the MyTrack tool was that it has a tracking system to set up goals, so it's goal-oriented. So it's set up in such a way that a teacher, a student, parents could set up goals for students should they want to use the system, and then monitor students' progress vis-à-vis those goals. And monitor their progress. And that data that was collected against that goal would show up on a regular basis that would be accessible to the parent, the student, and the teacher, administrator, whatever. So it had that kind of capacity, which I really like in student engagement. Part of that, I think it's a really important piece for me, is engaging kids to the extent we can in the goals that grownups set for them. There's too much of that standard setting, these are goals you should meet, and not enough engaging with kids so that those are their goals. Because if you want kids to achieve at high levels, it has to be their goals to, not just arrows for them. So those are the main reasons I like it. I'm very concerned about Dedication, and Pearson kind of was a deal that I wasn't really ready to go with. And during the dependency of the first year, and now it sounds like in the second year, it doesn't cost anything. I don't get a sandbox. So when I have a high degree of confidence, I kind of like this one middle, I'm thinking, well, it's free in the first year, free-ish, anyway. Nothing's free.
Right.
But anyway, I figure I'll let other people play in those other two sandboxes, I'll play in the one that I feel the best about, and then we'll ask around and see how everybody's doing because you can switch. Because these are like apps into a system. Because these are like apps into a system, so if you want to switch to Dedication, let's say they, you know, the buzz out there is that they've really got it right in the next year, you can switch out to another portal. So that's really why I was trying to go with something comfortable, endurable, high degree of reliability over a longer period of time that I know works. Sean has a good reputation out there too, can trust him. You know, he doesn't go out and just sell stuff, tells it like it is, that kind of person.
Marvin, did the FAQ on Engage New York does, you know, one of the questions is how much will the data dashboards cost after Race the Top funding ends? Although, not that the Race the Top funding is really relevant, is, so their answer is that, that we're not required to purchase these services after it ends, but of course, the ones who've had all your data pushed into this dashboard, why would you take it out? And then STD says they're continuing to work on the business model and pricing with the goal of sharing this information in advance of the selection process. I don't know if any information was shared in advance of the selection process, in the event that districts wish to continue these tools at local expense. So I guess from our purposes here and budgeting in the future, we need to know that in fact this is going to cost. Were there any, was there any information about pricing shared with you?
Yeah, we have what the projected pricing is going to be once the kid contract sunsets. It's on a, I didn't bring it with me, but I could get it for you. It's a per user price, is my recollection, I think they defined user as student. So there's a per student price, and they're all priced at different points. The problem with this, again, trying to project pricing is hard at this stage of the game because you don't know what they're including in their dashboard.
Right.
They, they may say, our dashboard does all these things, but that may not be included in the per kid price, and until you find that out, you're not going to know what's included. So I need to see this thing in action and know, okay, one thing may cost you 10 bucks a kid, let's say, and another one's five bucks, so you think, oh my gosh, well, let's get the one for five bucks. Yeah, but if you have to pay $2 to add that and $3 to add this and now you're $12 and the other one's a flat rate, and by the way, they keep adding on, but they, they charge you that flat rate, so any upgrades to their system, they don't charge you extra. So you have to find out about all that before you can actually know what your cost is going to be after the contract sunsets Race to the Top. And I think as we get into this year, we'll all start to find out all that sort of thing. The other thing that's, that drives price is quantity, because it's an economy of scale thing. So if all of a sudden lots of users are in one system, the cost is going to come down. Whereas if they have less users, their cost is going to go up. So you can, it's a hard thing to figure out, but they did put out some equitable cost projections at the end of, of Race to the Top. Although I'm told that this year it's supposed to be, you know, free at no cost, and then next year. So then cost actually comes in the year following, according to what I know.
So we're being told we have to pick one, but we really don't know, they're just projections over how much it's going to cost us?
Yeah. I would say that that's a safe.
Right.
There's no way to know definitively what it's going to cost, particularly two years out. I mean, you, you're objective.
So I think an interesting thing for me is that the state says a couple of times in our FAQs that we will not sell the data. But what I'm, what seems to me to be happening, as I observe what's happening to money, is that in fact we're paying for them, we're actually giving them money to take data, whoever "them" might be. So news reports say that the contracts with InBloom from the state, and I can't, couldn't find it on an actual state website, are $50 million in state grants, a couple of news reports, to pay InBloom. And then we're going to be paying for the data dashboard. So am I, I mean, I'm just wondering if this selling data is a kind of obfuscation of the actual flow of money? So the public money is actually going to private entities? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I get you, Chris.
Well, you know, they always say follow money, if you want to know what's going on, so that's, that's just my observation. And I couldn't find anything to disavow me of that on their FAQs. Are there other questions, Ms. Marvin? I'll just, another highlight of issue for me that I have concerns about where I see the merits, if we want to discuss sort of the merits or concerns about the issue about this whole process. And I, I see what some of the technological advance, you know, advantages are of, of a system that is fluid through a district and maybe even through a region, through a state. Nine states originally signed up to use InBloom, and only New York State is now currently using it for statewide data. Other states have backed out of it, and like the education commissioner in Massachusetts said, we consider it to be still in research and development phase and not looking to it. Illinois, a couple of districts are, have a pilot of it that may expand, but, but other than Illinois, New York, and New York's the only one that's statewide, others have sort of backtracked. So that raises another sort of set of questions for me, that in fact those state education departments have decided to, to, to not pursue this at this time. So, you know, there are, you know, Joe shared with us the letter, a model letter perhaps to InBloom requesting that student data, that help us to understand more what is going to happen with the student data and that personally identifiable information not be part of the data and be removed as one strategy of addressing concerns people have. We've talked about addressing concerns that we may or may not have collectively to the state education department. And of course, you know, starting last winter, we did discuss this with our own state legislators, data privacy issues last winter. And Teri Gibson, our own state senator, is a co-sponsor of legislation in the senate to require parental consent for sharing student data. My understanding is that legislation that was similar to that passed the assembly last year, but that the senate education committee held this piece of legislation and didn't come out of education committee. So there are a variety of ways if this board is concerned collectively about how the state is rushing into this and whether or not we feel like we have concerns, there are sort of avenues to pursue. I guess I'd just open that up to people to see if there are other concerns. Deirdre?
Yeah, I think the real question I have trying to think through all of this is what are the options at a local school district level in terms of perhaps we see the need for collecting data, for using data? You already have pointed out to us, and I think it's important for us to realize that data has been collected and used prior to this moment, but, you know, what is our responsibility, right, at a local level to the children and the families in this district to think through the issues very seriously about moving from the kinds of data reporting that you've outlined for us to something like this third level of going to InBloom? And really what are our options in terms of how we signal criticism or a choice to, not to participate, or how one could do that? I mean, that's really what I want to know at this point. In a meaningful way, not just in a purely symbolic way, but in some meaningful way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, you know, I don't have a problem with sharing of data. You know, there's all sorts of legitimate purposes to use data. You know, for parents to compare their children with children all over the state, or for the state education department to see how students are doing in certain parts of the state or in certain school districts, you know, for evaluation of schools or teachers or any of those kind of things. But my real concern with the sharing of the data is when it, there's a chance that the data's going to be used for commercial purposes, which is, you know, marketing of educational products to families or to school districts or, or whomever it may, you know, whomever it may be. You know, having data in data warehouses, there's always chances for breaches. We've had data being shared for numbers of years, so as far as I know, there haven't been any problems in that area. But my real concern with all of this is the commercialization of, of the data.
Diane?
Marvin, I just wanted to clarify that point, going back a few steps, when you were talking about the bicycle, when you're shopping for a bicycle and you get popped down, sort of bicycles. I mean, when I'm online looking at patient information, I'm on a secure server and I'm not getting pop-ups of curing renal failure because no one can see what I'm doing. That's the point of a secure server. Our dashboards are going to be that same kind of secure server. I, I thought what you were saying is that you can then have the option, or we can as a school district, decide if we want to add any commercial products for parents to consider based on each student's needs. But we don't have to have any products coming into our dashboard, do we?
That's what I'm told. We can, we will control that strength. I think different, the three different dashboards are called different things, but it's basically a strategy link to the goals that the student would be setting and the assessments which would then have attendant strategy. And the district will control what goes in that strategy dropdown, will then become available to parent, to student, or whatever. So yeah, we'll control that. It's not a random kind of thing, like you might have a few routes. Just on a general, you know, Google search or on Amazon, it's not like that. The point I was making there is the data analytic tool is similar to that in the way it, it does relational database analysis. It relates multiple data points and then creates connections to certain kinds of things. So what shows up in that section called strategies, we would control. That's what I'm told. Yeah.
So does anyone else have any concerns or not so much? Dan?
I have another question. Marvin, I don't think you know the answer, though. Would there be a difference in what pops up between a product that they'd be trying to sell to a parent versus like a website that would give you actually helpful information for your student because you might want one but not the other?
I, I think it would be at this stage, I'm mistaken, think of it as retail, but more strategy and intervention oriented. It's going to be tools that would be available. Now, if that happened to be a, a tool, let me give it, I'm trying to, I'm running a quick, let's say in everyday math in the elementary school, we've got links in our everyday math system that would have fact fluency practice available to a third grade. Just that. If we put that in the strategy area because we know that based on our assessment information, that student was relatively weak in fact fluency, and we put that in the strategy section, then you might log in and see that available to the student. So is that a commercial product? Yes. We already have, we already have that commercial product and we're using it. We would just then be making it available as a, as a reminder and a sort of a one-stop-shop place to access that information. As opposed to, let's say, going on the teacher's website and say, oh, look, here's some fact fluency practice, let's do that. It would just show up in the same place. It kind of gets back to the big plan. They're trying to get all this information in one place so that it's kind of a one-stop-shop thing. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to characterize it as a retail platform for curriculum materials. That would be a mischaracterization. I hope I didn't say that if I did. I was just trying to give you an example of how these, these meta-analytic tools operate, that they would be doing it in that way.
I will just, you know, I mean, I guess from my standpoint, the, you know, it is InBloom's own website that says their ultimate goal is the unleashing of the marketplace. So I think it's hard to say exactly what unleashing the marketplace is going to mean, but clearly unleashing the marketplace is about selling products with the data somehow. I don't know what that means. Deirdre?
One other thing that really concerns me, going back to the data points, you know, that we're already working with, you said 19 sort of imports in terms of the kinds of records we'll be keeping. This can, of course, continue to expand. And the idea of profiling students, you know, in terms of the intersection of behavioral records, disciplinary records, academic achievement, you know, all of these data points. I can understand, I suppose, why this might be important in places where there's a belief that we don't know our students or, you know, there's some kind of problem of getting a holistic view of the children in our schools, but I find it deeply disturbing, the idea that sort of profiling is, you know, an emergent way of thinking about the education of children. I, I think that measuring achievement and accomplishment and understanding growth in a child has to partake of many different kinds of information, much of which cannot be loaded into a data dashboard. So it worries me. I, I think that this trend is, it's disturbing.
So any other comments or thoughts about this? Or others who really are not seeming to have a lot to say, feeling that they're very comfortable with this? Is that, is that what, can I take the silence to mean that you feel that in fact we should just, you know, upload away and?
I don't like the idea of protesting simply for the sake of protesting, taking a no stance just because people are saying, oh my God, isn't this a terrible thing that the, the whole world is collecting our children's data? We have legitimate concerns and there is an effective way to address them, and we should do that. But if what we're really doing is reacting to the miasma of concern surrounding InBloom and the only thing that we can do is take symbolic action that's not going to change anything, I think that it's not only a waste of time, but it's also, it's a disservice to the community we serve to, you know, suggest that this is a problem, that we have the ability to do something about it, we don't. You know, to raise concerns, to talk about them is certainly something we should do, and to monitor the progress is something that we should do. But to, to talk about taking action when, I'm not sure we're prepared to do that, and I'm not sure there's any action we can take that would really change anything, it seems at least premature to me.
So I guess the other question was, though, do you have any concerns? Whether you think historically, say, it would be a larger conversation about the historical relevancy of symbolic actions and protest of public policy, but just on this particular issue, do you have any concerns specific to?
I mean, News Corporation's a big, big, big company, and a part of News Corporation did a very bad thing. I'm not minimizing it at all. But, you know, in the same way that people sometimes think of the government, the government as being a monolithic entity that is all geared towards taking a particular path, when in fact the government is at least as atomized as the populations that it serves, I think that that's probably true of News Corporation too. And I'm certainly not prepared to trust InBloom blindly, although I'm not sure how much information we're ever really going to get about how it operates. But I'm also not prepared to say InBloom must be a bad company because it's owned by News Corporation. News Corporation's a bad company. I don't even necessarily think News Corporation's a bad company. One element of it clearly did some very bad things, but it's a company, it's a, it does some useful things as well. And maybe InBloom is one of the useful things it does. I don't think we know yet. So do I have concerns, sort of small c-concerns, you know, to see how things play out? Do I have any concerns that would drive me to take precipitous action that?
Like write a letter? Write a letter? You wouldn't want to write a letter?
I wouldn't write a one, write a letter at this point, in the future. I, I could see writing a letter at some point if we, and, and the only circumstances I, based on what I've heard so far this evening, that I- heard so far this evening, that I could really see doing it would be if we thought that there was a significant concern with data collection and the uses of the data that we can't do anything directly about today, but we think that there is some value potentially for the future in taking a stand against certain elements of the process because we think, for example, that legislative action is in the works to try to limit the use of the data. So if we saw that coming down the pike, it might be useful to take that position, both to add our voices to the mix and also to, you know, go on record, whatever that may mean, to say, okay, if you ever decide that there should be limitations on uses of the data and you're going to look to see who took a position that they want those limitations on the uses of the data for their district, we took that position. So consider us on board for that. But just to write a letter just because we're nervous about it?
Right. I'm more than nervous about it. Does anyone else have any? Diane?
Marvin, I guess I have one more question for you. I mean, I think I hear like three different concerns. One is the potential for marketing of the data, using our kids' information to market educational tools. It's not really happening yet, but it is a potential. You know, we could look at both sides of that as, you know, use information for different learning styles and develop applications that help them versus, you know, public funding going to private enterprise. The other is the collection of data in general, which is growing. And the other is the sharing of data, even if it's just within the educational institution. And how do you really feel about a teacher getting all of the background information about a student coming into their class, including their full behavioral record and their absentee record or maybe any, I don't know, conflicts that they had? I mean, is it, is it too much information? Like, does it not allow anyone to reinvent themselves as they grow up and go through their teenage years, their rebellious years? Is there, is there concern within the educational community about maybe not wanting to see all that information?
I am very concerned at all times with anyone developing presumptions about kids prior before they interact with those kids. I'm always concerned about stereotype bias. I'm always concerned about someone profiling. Maybe that's a strong word, but because it has connotations. But I, but I do understand what that means because it's basically saying, I mean, how is that any different than saying that apple don't fall too far from the tree? I mean, that's profiling, right? I mean, so I am very concerned about that. So when you're looking at any data tools, using them to sort and classify for purposes of creating a sorting machine to who can and who can't and then foreclosing on a student achievement possibility for a kid, that's a bad thing. All that is a bad thing. So being really sensitive to that is important. The flip side of that, though, is having tools that would allow you access to information about kids that could help you personalize learning, differentiate instruction in a group of kids more effectively, monitor the efficacy of the kinds of teaching strategies that you're using, whether they're working or not, and then not, you know, foreclosing on that child's future, but possibly optimizing that child's chances. So this is a razor's edge problem. It has to be managed by professional competent people that would use a different thing in your own field where you use medical information. Say, well, you come from a family of this, that, and the other thing, and so you're prone to that, and so chances really aren't that good. I mean, it isn't that different of a kind of way of thinking. So we have to always stay, you know, optimistic. Those have to stay looking for kids' opportunity to self-actualize and build their self-concept. So it's always a delicate balance. And so that's why I like to use this phrase, you know, the right information to the right person for the right reason at the right time. I mean, I think that's a delicate balance. What's nice about local control is that you can control those user class permissions locally. I have backend access to school tool, for example. I can go in in the maintenance system and click a bunch of toggles and only make certain information available to you. Simple thing is, you have a student with disabilities in your class, you will have, because you have an educational reason to know, a little puzzle piece that will pop up on your screen that shows that there's an IP attached to that puzzle piece. You can click on it and go look at it. If you don't have any special education students in your class, you don't get to see this puzzle piece. So you could, you could filter. So some of that is making sure that you're filtering well, so that the person has the right information for the right purposes and by the way that they're taught to use that information in a way that's efficacious for the student, builds their self-concept, maximizes your opportunity and so on. So it's a tough balance.
Any other questions or comments? Can we move on? Joe, do you have any final words on this?
No, except that, well, I think, I think there is, you know, I think part of the problem that we're talking about is part of the bigger issue with, with the entire Regents Reform Agenda. And that's, that's the rapidity which this has been rolled out. And a lot of the questions we're talking about here, we don't know. We just flat out don't know. Or we're being told this, but there's other information that is making us think, yeah, but maybe not so. I mean, but we don't know. And I think that's, that's part of the conundrum here is, you know, what do we do when we don't know how it's going to play out? At the very least, I think we can, we can make sure that, that we keep our eyes open, that we're, we're wary of what's going. We're not afraid of it. You know, somebody used the term, you know, what do these districts fear that Rhinebeck doesn't fear? Well, I'm not sure I'm fearing any of this, but I'm concerned about it. And I think we've got to make sure we, we stay on top of it. And as, as this gets rolled out, like maybe it should have gotten rolled out for a year or two before we had to make these decisions. But that's not the way this particular set of initiatives has been rolled out. You could say the same thing about the other parts of the Regents Reform Agenda. And in fact, if you, if you look at that, that statement from Saini's, I mean, they take a pretty strong position that the train needs to be slowed down here so we get a handle on, on various elements of this reform agenda. And this is just, is one of a number of different elements. You know, my, my sense is that, you know, unless directed differently by this board, that to the extent that we've been able to make an intelligent decision, choice, guess, you know, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure where along that continuum it is, but based on what we, what we know and believe from what we've been told, that I think we can make a decision on a data dashboard. I'd rather pick something that seems like it's more suitable to us than have somebody else in a windowless room in Albany click a different box and now that's the one we're playing around in for the next two years instead of something that we think might be more suitable. And again, we can change if we need to. I mean, there's, there's some flexibility in this. I think some of the other things we're talking about, whether it's, you know, getting behind legislation that's back in the hopper apparently this year again, and/or sending, you know, sending a letter to In Bloom saying, pull us out of your warehouse, or writing a letter to the Regents and Commissioner King or the governor. I mean, there isn't a clock ticking on that. I mean, there's, there's no date by which we have to make a decision tonight, for example. We can do it in two weeks or in a month or, or not at all. Or if people, you know, I've tried to bring you some options that if people felt so inclined, tonight, we got to do something now, that there are some things we could do now, but we don't have to. We're not going to, we're not going to miss any boat by not acting tonight. But I think we need to be wary. I think we need to be watching this as it, as it rolls out because enough concerns have been raised that I think to just blindly trust any of the players in this game would not be a good idea. I don't, I don't trust any of the players to that level. And quite frankly, the answers that have been raised in various places and the way they've been answered by people at the State Education Department make me wonder whether or not they really understand what's going on. And that kind of freaks me out more than, than some of the other, you know, conspiracy theories that we can put together is when the people who were saying, you know, we're from the State Education Department, trust us, this is how it's going to work. And you ask not crazy questions and you get a lot of shoulder shrugging and, well, we don't know. We'll have to find out. We'll get back to you. And that, that makes me nervous because it says that, that they're not even ahead of the curve. And that's, if they're not ahead of the curve, we sure aren't. We can't be.
All right. So we can have additional updates or discussion. I mean, I think, I concur with Deirdre that it's our response, we have a responsibility of the community to be informed and, and have a perspective on the Revenant Reform Agenda and on the, on what are the hottest educational policy issues happening in our region and in our state and nationally. I think that that's what our leadership is, that's what we're called to do as leaders in this community. And so I think that we should continue to discuss these issues and that, that, you know, that's, that's my perspective is that we should engage with public policy rather than just implement it unquestioningly. So how about?
If I could just say, my sense is that we're, we're going to hear more on this topic before we start hearing less on this topic. I'm, my sense is that it's heating up as opposed to that we're kind of late to the game here. I think we're actually right in the middle of the game. Three of us are going to a talk on Thursday night that deals with the Common Core and data. The, the meeting that I referenced earlier tonight down in Westchester County on Friday morning with four of the Regents has already drawn quite a reaction from Ken Wagner and Ken Slantz wanting meetings with those superintendents right away. So that tells me that got their attention. A, I'm told that the, the head Regents, Merrill Tish, has reached out to that group already just since Friday morning and wanted to know why she wasn't invited to the meeting and she wants to be part of that conversation. So I, I think it's starting to get people's attention. I'm not just saying that one group, but they're making a lot of noise down there. And so I think we'll hear more before this thing dies down. We'll, when I hear stuff, you know, all this stuff I just got literally over the weekend.
Yes, that's right. So I think the other place we're hearing stuff is on Facebook in our own community and our own parents concerned about it. So I think in a very direct way, we might find that we need to actually, you know, respond to our own parents' concerns. I mean, I, I think you're all aware of that. So we don't have to do this this evening, but I think, again, either perspectives that says we're sort of trusting but waiting or that we have deep concerns. I mean, I'll just, you know, it's no, it's no, it's no secret from this evening, just that I have some deep concerns. I tend, I come from a more activist background, engagement with community organizing in a way that you actually sort of speak to the powers that be about what you think. But we are the powers that be in this community. And so we may need to be the people to respond to our own community's concerns.
Well, if I, if I could use that as, to plug part of our outreach, we are having two events on the 19th of November, a week from today. One in the morning from nine to 10 at Chancellor and one in the evening in this room from 7:30 to 8:30, which is not a formal presentation on any particular topic, but that certainly I would expect that if people are interested and concerned about these kinds of topics, there's an opportunity for them to engage with their elected school board officials to raise their concerns. And we're, you know, so I would invite everybody who is listening to this on via YouTube or, or Panda, that that's going to be happening. We sent that an email to everybody this evening and of course posted on our website. So we're trying to get the word out there. So there's an opportunity for that, that kind of discussion dialogue. And we can look at other opportunities that may either come out of that or come out of other discussions we're having to, to outreach or respond to people. And we certainly welcome that response and we'll, we'll do our best to give them answers such as we have. And we'll beg their indulgence because we don't have had answers on a lot of this stuff either. So we'll do our best and.
So who's going to be able to come on next Tuesday morning and Tuesday evening? Okay. All right.
Yeah, I think we have four, one and five at the other.
Okay. So why don't we move on now to Marvin? I want to just say thank you very much because you're really up against a lot dealing with all these changes. You are the person who's doing all this work interfacing with the state. And 19 uploads a year is like a whole other issue that Deirdre sort of started to talk about, which, you know, is a whole nother problem because I don't think that's why we originally hired you was to do that. But your job has changed and you have a tremendous amount of challenges. And I appreciate that and I appreciate you being here tonight to share with us your information. So thank you for all your very good work. Thank you. We'll move on now to our 2013 NISBA convention review. We had several people here who attended the convention. I guess if there's an opportunity, if anyone wanted to share their reflections on that. Laura?
I'd really like to say that it was a tremendous opportunity for me as a new school board member, just to go to Rochester, to meet other people from other districts from around the state and hear about what school districts are doing. You know, we're all squeezed for money and the really wonderful, exciting things that kids are presenting that upstairs with the expo. They had all of these children, 21st Century Learning, and they were kids showing us their, their projects through Project Lead the Way and all of these wonderful things that they're doing and programs that their teachers are implementing in their classrooms to make a difference for their learning. It was really invigorating. I understand. Great. Thank you for letting us go. It was terrific.
Great.
I have to second what Laura said. I thought it was a very good experience, very educational for me certainly. And in addition to the sessions that we attended during the convention proper, as you know, I also went to the pre-session, the school law session, which had a number of very interesting presentations as well. And one that I would like to have an opportunity to talk about at some point in the appropriate forum is the presentation that was done about school safety and particularly dealing with the unfortunately ever-present fear of school attackers, school shooters primarily, which, you know, is something that we don't, we don't sit around thinking about all the time, but when it happens, we think a lot about. So I got some very interesting material about it and I'm prepared to discuss it if the board wants to hear about it at some point or in the appropriate committee or however. It's the board's pleasure to, for me to share that information.
Okay. Any other comments or reflections on the convention? Mark?
Well, I, I thought it was very worthwhile for us all to go to the convention. Being an IT guy, I went to a number of sessions on, you know, IT-related topics. I went to one that was presented by a school district. I went to one that was presented by a school district, a small school district in central New York, where they have all the students in grade six through 12 use an iPad, which is a very innovative approach for a somewhat poorer school district. But they're certainly doing really interesting things with the iPads. And I also went to a session on bring your own device, which is, as we move forward with hiring a technology director, that may be something we want to look into at some point. And there was model policies that were presented in that session, so we'll provide copies with that at some point. And I also went to one on computer and data security, which is kind of a hot topic right now as we talk about in bloom. So, and several of us went to visit the Board docs booth and talk about paperless board meetings, and there was a number of other topics that we looked into as well.
Great.
I'll just add that it was a great opportunity for all of us as relatively new board members to connect with our more senior colleagues and sharing ideas and talking about the different sessions was really a fantastic opportunity for us and also for Joe to introduce us around a little bit to some of our colleagues in other districts was really helpful. And for me, I think the vast majority of everything I heard was actually really exciting and inspirational. And I think my favorite event I attended was a session with last year's New York State Teacher of the Year and his superintendent, and their special session was on keeping your district's core as you implement the Common Core. And they talked about ways in which, thinking about, apart from the implementation issues, the challenges we've been talking about tonight, Common Core is a real opportunity for school communities, communities of practice, as we've been talking about, to come together in a really important and powerful way to communicate around what it is we do together, and that includes at the board level with our families and communities as well. So their stress was very much on communication as a two-way process, and that as we're all kind of going into this new world of Common Core standards, communication, listening, and listening, and listening, and listening is going to be crucial for all of us. So it was a great opportunity.
And I just say that I've been to quite a number of these over, you know, over my career, and maybe it's because we haven't gone in a couple of years, but I was very impressed with the number of available workshops. And I think we did a great job of splitting them up and trying to, you know, get the maximum mileage out of that. But there were many more that I would have gone to had I been able to clone myself. And beyond that, I think the opportunity to have discussions about education, even when we weren't in the various workshops, you know, it's a long drive to and from Rochester, but I do recall a former colleague who's in the audience and taking those long drives to Buffalo and Rochester, and, you know, a lot of the best brain work happened in those informal, unstructured opportunities. And I found that to be the case a few weeks ago as well.
Well, thanks all of you for attending on our behalf. In the past, NISBA has had some of the handouts or other materials at workshops available online. So if there's anything that you want to share that you saw have, that you would just want to share electronically, or if you have paper that you want to share, you know, I just encourage you to do that if there's something that you think would be useful for us to know about. But thanks very much for going. I'm glad it was a good weekend, plus for all of you. Thank you. We'll move on now to board committee reports. I think we have three of them. The first one is facilities, and Deirdre, you did that those minutes. Do you want to just review that?
Quickly, quickly review it. So the facilities committee met for the first time in October, and we had a full report on the removal of the asbestos floor tiles that had begun to disintegrate. And the process for that removal, safe removal of asbestos floor tile, was outlined by Sheldon Teeter. And there was some discussion about the feasibility, as other districts do, of sometimes in the summer, just setting aside particular rooms to, in an orderly fashion, remove those tiles as needed. Sheldon was asked to come back with some information about what sort of timeline one could contemplate for such a project. We were briefed on the Utica National School Safety Excellence Award, a sort of voluntary program with the Utica National School Safety Program for Best Practices for being awarded honor status. And that led into some discussion just of our sort of insurance coverage more generally. We talked very briefly about projects that we could anticipate coming into the budgeting process for the next round in 2013-14. We'll be working towards drawing up that list of facilities' needs and concerns, and that really ties into our next meeting's agenda, which is to look at the building condition surveys for the buildings.
Great. Any questions?
If we get the national safety award, is there a discount to our insurance?
We get a pat on the back, I think. Yeah, it's not a void, but...
A certificate, we can hang up. Any other questions?
I had a question. After the optimal budget list, will we need additional infrastructure for the technology project underway? Most likely not, but I'm wondering if the committee's considered more largely what the infrastructure needs are going to be for technology. I know that we talked about, the facilities committee talking about sustainability and kind of put upon the ECO initiative findings and that sort of thing. It doesn't look like that was...
We didn't talk about sustainability, but we did talk more broadly about infrastructure issues for technology, supporting, bringing in new technology to the building.
Any other questions? Then the next one is the Personnel Committee. Diane Lyons did that.
We talked a little bit about the upcoming contract negotiations. Just waiting to look at the final contract and the last negotiations and start on that. And then our ongoing discussion about hiring practices. We looked at how we advertise. We came up with some new ideas possibly on advertising a little bit more. And then we talked about, should a GPA be a minimum criteria? And after that meeting, we met and looked through some applications that had come in just to get a look at what was out there to help our discussion. And the next meeting, we'll go back and discuss what we found.
Any questions for Personnel? Diane?
So I just wanted to add a little bit to that because we're currently posting quite a few jobs. Joe, we are for CLS. Are they all posted at this point?
I believe so, actually.
Okay. So, you know, we've been talking about hiring practices for the entire time I've been on the board, and should we do anything different? And is there a need to do anything different? You know, I think one of my takeaways from both meetings was we certainly get enough applicants, but we don't get a lot of diversity of applicants. The majority are from two universities, and I think no one wants an entire district just from one university setting. So one of the goals is just to broaden our outreach. We don't necessarily need more applicants, but we need a broader range of applicants. Joe, we talked about posting at specifically some Columbia and Bank Street, NYU, some other universities locally. Are we doing that for these jobs that are posted?
Yes, and I'll go over that the next time we meet. I actually had Meg track down for me a list of the colleges and universities that BOSI's currently sends those to. And I think we can add to that list, we should add to that list, but I was surprised at the number of universities that was already on the list. So I think we've addressed some of that, but not all of that. So we would have to do that manually at this point, and we can because we've got, you know, we've got a timeline here that we're working on. So, yeah. We'd have to backfill that some.
Okay. And I think the other observation from the majority of the applicants, we had really pretty good GPAs. I think that if we decided to have a cutoff point, that it wouldn't have limited that many applicants from the pool.
Didn't SUNY just actually move to create a grade point threshold for students being admitted to their education program and their education degree generally? So, I mean, they're already beginning to take this step themselves in terms of teacher training.
And I'll just share, just to sort of nuance to what you're saying, is basically, we just grabbed, and we grabbed applicants that were from job postings last year. And so it wasn't like a scientific assessment of where people were coming from at all. And we haven't had an opportunity to fully digest it, although we did have a good conversation afterwards. Because in my pile, it was like, it was more than two schools, but it was certainly regional, you know, within the mid-Hudson Valley and certain schools as opposed to a variety of schools. But, and then those individuals who included their GPA, there were many who didn't in their resumes or application. But those who did had, you know, had a good academic record as far as grade point average. So, you know, I think it was a useful activity for the Personnel Committee to engage with, Any questions, any other questions or comments on that? All right, then we move on to Communications.
Well, Joe mentioned coffee with the Board. We've settled on Tuesday, November 19th at 9:00 at Chancellor and 7:30 here in the library. And we really do want this meeting to feel much more informal, not like a board meeting. We want our parents to come and, you know, talk to us about their thoughts and what is important to them and what they are fixing on now and what we as board members can do to address those thoughts. Deirdre shared with us one of the sessions she had gone to at NISBA, managing opposition to important projects. And it was all around the idea that you're never going to get a community to be wholly behind everything you do, but the important thing is to continue to listen to your community and to engage their thoughts so that you can build at least consensus. And if we, the Board, can consistently refer back to our mission and vision and core values and the reasons we make the decisions that we make are a reflection of the mission and vision, then more often than not, you're going to be able to educate your community as to the reasons for your choices. And we're excited to sign on a new tech director hopefully soon so that we can give that person a communications plan for the future. We also talked about the Concerns FAQ that came out of policy and did a bit of a rewrite and talked about sort of the voice that we wanted that to have. The copy of the latest draft is behind the minutes here. I mean, we welcome any of our sounds. And then we talked a little bit about the student data. This meeting was right after those back to the Hyde Park announcements. So, yeah, we're every mindful of this conversation and trying to weave through the hype versus what we really can learn.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Communications? Lisa?
I have two questions. Well, two items, really. First is, did you folks talk at all about what you expect the format for the Coffee with the Board sessions to be?
Very informal, you know, much like it was with breakfast with the Board with the teachers.
Okay, so just people standing around and talking to them. Okay. And then I do have a couple of comments on the Concerns FAQ.
Okay, let's hear it.
And I thank the Communications Committee for doing this, and I think you did a very nice job with the tone. The comments that I have are really just to make sure that what you changed is consonant with the policies because since this is a gloss on the policies, there shouldn't be any areas where there's a substantive difference between them. So on the first page, the paragraph that begins, if your concern involves a specific employee of the district, the second line, the phrase, try to raise your concern directly with that person. My sense of the way the policy was drafted was that the policy was that members of the public with a concern about a specific employee should raise that with the person in the first instance. And while I understand the nuanced difference of, you know, some people may feel uncomfortable going to the person directly, or, you know, they may feel rebuffed if they try to do that, just using the word "try" makes it seem, at least to me, like we are saying, well, you know, the policy says you should do this, but you don't really have to do it. And of course, the policy itself says, we're not going to force you to do anything anyway. I feel like there's a little bit of a disconnect between that and the policy. And then in that same paragraph, the last line sentence is, if you are still unsatisfied, feel free to bring your concern to the building principal and/or the superintendent thereto. I think there's a little bit of a difference with the policy because the policy, I believe, says if you're unsatisfied after speaking with the person's direct supervisor, you should speak to the building principal and then to the superintendent. And again, you know, it's not the district's policy to force anybody to do anything that we suggest, but, you know, we do want people to understand the process, and so saying, feel free, just sort of seems like, well, you don't really have to, you know, do whatever you feel like doing. Again, it's kind of a nuanced thing, but, you know. On the next page, the third paragraph that begins, as long as your concern does not involve, the second to last line of that paragraph says, we will have to research the issue. So who's the "we" there? I think that the way the policy is written, it talks about the district taking actions. And so I think that you might want to consider changing that to, district will have to research On that same page, the last paragraph that begins, yes, the district will honor the anonymity, the second line, the very first word, I don't know if it's grammatically correct to say concern or the child about which the concern is being reported, about whom the concern is being reported? Maybe the educators on our end answer that better than I, but it struck my ear funny. And then my last comment was that the very last paragraph on the very last page, which cites to the specific policies, seems to me to be exactly the same as the very first paragraph on the very first page.
It is. We wanted to reiterate it. So that when you get through this FAQ, you still have the reference to where you go on the website to read the policies and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane?
So I just had two questions. One was on the second page at the bottom concerning anonymous complaints or... It says that depending on the nature of the concern, certain laws and regulations may require the district to report alleged conduct and may actually... the district to report alleged conduct and may actually prohibit the district from keeping such information confidential. Is that true? So I thought during our, like, sexual harassment training, that yellow flags and red flags could be reported anonymously and...
Well, for example, I think if there's an abuse, if there's abuse, you can't keep that confidential. You've got to report that.
Okay.
Just as an example.
Right, right. Yeah, no, that makes sense. If there was, say, a yellow flag kind of report, like, I think Teacher X is just creepy and saying, you know, maybe saying inappropriate things, is that something that may be anonymous?
I would guess, yes, I would guess that probably could remain anonymous. I mean, I think when there's a mandated reporter function or when, let's say, a report winds up leading to a 30-28 charge against an employee and now you're essentially, you're in court, you're in a legal proceeding, you can't go through that and say, well, I'm not, I can't say who it was. You've got to step up at that point. If it gets to that point, that's obviously, you know, a far end of the continuum, but you wouldn't want to mislead somebody into thinking that, at no time would I ever have to divulge that anonymity.
Okay. I'm actually wondering if maybe we could, I'm just thinking now as you're raising the issue about that paragraph, if we could make a distinction more between anonymity and confidentiality. Because over the years, we've received occasional truly anonymous complaints. In fact, recently, there was an anonymous letter sent to, a letter sent to Joe and myself regarding the use of the Apple Press in the third grade classroom. And the unfortunate thing about an anonymous letter is that you cannot address the person's concerns. You know, our insurance companies look at the Apple Press and are satisfied that it's working properly and isn't endangering anyone, but we wouldn't know who to tell that to because someone sent it anonymously. So I actually would like to discourage anonymous, but if people feel that that is all they can do, they can do. What I think people want to be assured about more particularly is that any concerns they bring to someone will remain confidential. So maybe that could be reworked.
Well...
Because you could go to Superintendent Phelan and say, look, I don't want, you know, so-and-so to know that I'm saying this to you, but Joe would then know who he's talking to and can have an interaction with that person. When someone sends you an anonymous letter, you can maybe act on it. You would certainly act on a situation like that, and you can. But you can't have an interface with that person about any more information or reassure them or follow up in any way with that individual. So I think those distinctions might, you know, however you guys would maybe want to work it, could maybe be elucidated in the FAQ. And any other questions? I had a couple of other, just, I was, just a suggestion, take it or leave it, which would be a general statement at the beginning about encouraging communication, particularly with parents and teachers, which is the fundamental work that we do here. So, or something more broadly that we do encourage communication. And then I think it's good that you give phone numbers and ways to contact the district office and the bus terminal. I was wondering if, and you have links to the policies, if you want to have a link to the board contact list or mention even the staff directory on the website, just so that embedded in this is also a way to just know how you can locate those numbers. Any other suggestions or comments on that or for the Communications Committee more broadly? Thanks for all the work you guys have done. I appreciate it. Yeah, that'll be great to wrap that up and get that up there. So, thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to comments. And we have good news. Does anyone have any good news? Okay.
Well, yeah, we had a great postseason for our fall teams and more than just one. I mean, we had a lot of teams in postseason competition and...
We did.
That was a successful fall.
It was a very successful fall. And I'll also note that it can be a really nice community event, a couple of the soccer games and many members of our school community and the larger Rhinebeck community come. So I think the value of varsity sports as a community activity was really evident there as well. Any other good news? Old business? Anyone have any old business? Okay, then we move on to our second public comment. Would any members of the public like to comment? All right, then we move on to other, any other items? No? Okay, we're moving right along. Does anyone want to remove the item from the consent agenda? All right, then if not, we'll move. Can I have a motion upon the recommendation of schools to approve the consent item?
So moved.
By Mark?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous. If that passes? That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept many grant donations from the Rhinebeck PT SO in the total amount of $17,263.23 as stipulated?
So moved.
By Mark?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions?
I have a question. Joe, I was just curious, I thought that last year in the budget, we had added CLS school trips back into the budget.
Some, my understanding is not all.
So we're not up to where we were five years ago?
I'd want to go back and ask, or maybe...
No, I don't know the answer. I know they've, I mean, what the principal put in for last year for field trips, that's what's in the budget. What it actually covers, how many trips for classroom, for grade level, that I'm not aware of. And if this is a supplemental trip or is this a part of the normal routine, I'm not sure of that. We can ask Mr. King about that.
So maybe during the budget cycle, we can review what we have for field trips, how many we've used?
Right.
And what it used to be before we started cutting money out of it.
That's a good idea, yeah. And I'd like to just thank the PT SO as always for contributing so generously to what we can see in this list here are many activities for children directly affect the students, including $8,000 for expenditures for this school year for the Arts and Education Committee. So I want to just thank the PT SO for that. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept a grant award from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation in the amount of $940 in support of the implementation of the Fund with Energy Grant at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School in the amount of $600 as submitted by Ms. Sarah Seifert, grade three teacher, and Citizen Science Grant at Oakley Middle School in the amount of $340 as submitted by Ms. Kristen Kogle, grade eight science teacher as stipulated.
So moved.
By Mark?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Well, thanks again to the Rhinebeck Science Foundation for both of those excellent programs. I'd love to, the third graders Fund with Energy sounds fantastic, so I loved that. And I also want to note that in the application for the Citizen Science Program, it is noted that the Thompson Trust also supplements the whole program. So I just want to note the Thompson Trust's role in the larger Citizen Science Program. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from board Jennifer Famaletti to commence honor about March 5th, 2014 with such leave to be taken as medical leave for period of disability as certified by a position in writing to the extent of her crucifix leave.
So moved.
By Mark?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. Now, a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the recommendation of Jennifer McCracken to conduct selection classification fitness testing for the 2013-14 winter sports season.
So moved.
By Mark?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional advisors for Oakley Middle School for the 2013-14 school year effective November 13, 2013?
So moved.
By Mark?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve revised 2013-14 school tax bill refunding a total of $1,853.34 in reduction adjustments and to make the appropriate refund to the property owner if required?
So moved.
By Mark?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the 2013-14 superintendent's administrative goals?
So moved.
By Mark?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Lawrence?
Thank you, Joe, for putting this together. I had a couple of questions on some of them. The administrative goal, one, developing curriculum lines for Common Core. These ideas address the development of the curriculum. I'm wondering about implementation and if any of the indicators or the strategies should include how Common Core is being implemented. I don't know. It, maybe not, but I don't know how the board feels about that, but...
Well, if the board wants me to include implementation, then I'll have to do a rewrite and get them back to you.
Could you elaborate a little bit on the distinction and what you look for there?
Well, you can develop ideas about things and then you can implement those ideas. And I think in reading these, and maybe I'm not reading them correctly, in reading them it seemed a little bit like, you know, sort of planning to plan as opposed to implementing a plan. So, you know, providing the availability of resources is great. Collaborating with curriculum is, you know, it all is great, but it just, there's nothing in this that says to me that we can say at the end of the year, you know, I want to hang our hat on Joe's tremendous job at these things, you know, because it's all a little...
Well, I mean, the only thing I would point out, and maybe this does or doesn't meet the need that you're raising, but in the first goal, second line, the word "implementation" is included there after development. And in the first, "implementation strategy," we're talking about the implementation of instruction. So if that's not enough, then I'd have to go back and rework that.
The other thing is number 1.2 in implementation strategies is curricula that would be recommended to the full board for adoption. So what we do do, the board adopts ultimately all curriculum documents as they are developed in sort of a, you know, cohesive way. So as the documents, like, they're on our website, our curricular documents, but as they're rewritten, my understanding from, I'm not on the curriculum committee anymore, but I was, is that as those documents are revised, then they will come before the board for approval.
I think we talked about that in curriculum in our last meeting.
Right.
Mark's not thinking of receiving for a while because they're ever-changing, right?
Unless you're, unless you're talking about, like, teaching strategies or teaching the curriculum, if that's what you're thinking more of. But that might be a whole nother...
Maybe that's what I'm thinking, and maybe it's not appropriate for this particular goal. Having a document is one thing. I guess, you know, we keep talking about being able to monitor how well we're doing in implementing the curriculum, the new Common Core and these kinds of things. So maybe that's not, maybe they're two separate things. I don't, I'm not really sure. Because we want to, you know, we're looking for benchmarks and seeing that, you know, we're doing the right thing teaching our kids, you know, I guess, I'm not expressing this particularly well, except that I'm just not sure that there's anything concrete enough other than having a curriculum document on the website that the board has approved.
Right. I guess, I mean, my thought in terms of the, as it relates as well to the board goal and to the larger issue of Common Core standards is that, you know, of course, one of the problems is that it's so rushed that adapt, you know, adjusting the curriculum to the Common Core is one of our goals, right? So that, to me, that's what it was speaking to, but you could speak more to that.
Yeah, all of these are built off the board's goals.
I feel like maybe the piece you're talking about is the, ultimately is guiding us in assessing, right? Once there is a curriculum, but since we're still in the process of getting the curriculum into place, I don't know what the timing in terms of thinking about guiding assessment and evaluation and so forth. But that would be the next step.
Not state assessment, but our assessment.
Our own kind of process of, you know, evaluating how successfully we feel we're implementing this Common Core set of standards. Thank you. I mean, I...
Yeah. Any other questions? Diane?
I had a couple of questions about the technology, goal number three. So we talked about the use of digital technology to design and deliver instruction. And I just wanted to recall the beginning of the conversation and the self-audit being about a K through 12 sort of technology curriculum, not just the use of technology in delivering curriculum. And how do we coordinate the science program, the technology program with Chancellor to the middle school and expanding it to the high school? And it's not really explicitly stated in that sentence. In 3.2, it goes on to say, begin a multi-year process for planning the development of related curriculum. So I feel like it alludes to that and could be taken to that. I do feel like we've already begun a multi-year process, and it would be really nice to finish this year with something that showed a multi-year plan, more than just, you know, if project lead the way is successful, we'll add one more. You know, what would it, what would a multi-year plan look like with finances and teachers?
Well, I mean, to be quite honest with you, I don't want to commit to providing a multi-year plan when we have still to hire the person who's going to take the lead in developing that plan. So personally, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. We're obviously working towards that. Laura's been involved in that, in that process, and we're already into November. We haven't completed that hiring, but we're working on it. And I don't know how realistic that is, if we hired somebody to start in mid-year to have that done by June. I mean, it may be, but it would be a goal, but I'm not sure I'd want to sit here and say, yes, that document will be for you by June, because I can't guarantee that.
I wasn't suggesting that you come up with the multi-year...
Oh, yeah, no. Nor would I, nor would I. The end of it, to be quite honest with you, that's, somebody with the technical expertise needs to do that. And that's the end game, obviously, whether it's able to be done in June or later, I don't know. I mean, in a perfect world, we'd have had that person hired by the first week in September, but that's, you know, that's not, that's not where we're at in terms of the time limit.
And then the last sort of overview thought I have is not specifically about your indicators of progress, but, you know, it's sort of a thought that I asked you about when I first joined the board, is what is the point of the goals? What do we hope to get out of them? How do I come up with my ideas for them? And, you know, I find myself sitting here in November looking at these goals. We put a lot of effort into them this year, a lot of months into them. And I think we would have gone ahead with most of these agenda items for the year whether we did this practice or not. And we're certainly going to implement the Common Core and communicate about the Common Core and go ahead with what we started with technology and the food services just as momentum. So I just, you know, I just feel like the board... So I just, you know, I just feel like the board should spend some time just thinking about what we hope to get out of this and, you know, was the amount of time we put into it reflected in it or do we just need to be more simpler next year? Or do we, if we want to spend five months coming up with goals, do we want them to be more visionary over several years? It just, it doesn't, it seems, for me, it felt like we put a lot of time into it and it's not groundbreaking. It doesn't need to be groundbreaking, but maybe it didn't need to take this long either.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I guess I would just say that's like a bigger question that aren't really, I mean, Joe's administrative goals are directly related to our goals, so, you know, it is a separate issue then, what are our goals? And maybe what we should do is keep this in mind when we do a mid-year evaluation of ourselves, because there's a lot to say about what you just said, but let's not do it now. Okay? Does that make sense?
Can I just...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't want to shut down conversation, I just don't want to start a whole conversation or like...
Yeah, 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 about the goals. But again, as a new board member, and obviously for those who've been here longer, it may be very different for you, but certainly I found as a new board member, the fact that we talk with each other about these goals is actually incredibly useful in terms of setting our sights on what are we sharing, what are our values? You know, it does go back to that idea in communicating, what are the, what are the sort of things that guide us in our day-to-day discussions and decision-making? And for me, in any case, even though that was a lengthy discussion, it was actually very fruitful and I felt I understood more about the board in terms of its shared aspirations. So, you know, just as a process as opposed to a goal, the process actually strikes me as useful.
Yeah, you know, and in that vein, you know, I just, the, for example, for many years, when the state cared about it, as well as us, school climate issues were on our goals going year after year after year, and I think our, I think we did have an opportunity to reflect with the principals a little bit about this, and Joe, you pointed out, I mean, we might take for granted some of the school climate initiatives that are now in place, but we should not take them for granted because as they have been part of goals and they get embedded in the school culture, and maybe in a year or two, you need to come back and revisit those things, but things that seem self-evident need to be focused on as a community for all of us and to articulate that from leadership. Whether it's these four things or any other four things is, of course, the big question, but I think that we, as you just highlighted, focus collectively on something means, sets a kind of direction instead of the, you know, 100 things that you're doing every day anyway. But why don't we revisit that? I think we could do it maybe in January or February, our own self-evaluation in terms of those questions you asked. Any other questions about this or comments? Joe, thank you for putting them together, and I think they're really, for me, my standpoint are sensible alignment with the goals that the board articulated and approved in September. So I appreciate seeing that alignment and the, I know you've already begun a lot of these, and this is just the formal, formal document to move forward with it, so thank you. Okay, if there are no other questions then, all those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute personnel for the 2013-14 school year?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an extension of the appointment of Jill Simmons as a long-term substitute in the position of elementary teacher at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, having commenced September 1, 2013 for the duration of the 2013-14 school year. At the pleasure of the board at the salary of Step 1 MA plus 09, $52,740 in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule, this appointment is to fill the balance of the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Shannon Denise, elementary teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional mentors for the 2013-14 school year?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of David Jutton to the position of physical education teacher assigned to Rhinebeck High School effective November 13, 2013. In the tenure area of physical education, a salary of Step 3 plus 3 MA, $60,625 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the selection of Chemistry: A Molecular Approach, Third Edition, TRO, 2014, Prentice Hall as the textbook for the Advanced Placement Chemistry Course?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Paula Martin effective September 20, 2013 through January 19, 2014 with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a position in writing to the extent of her accrued leave?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Anita Thompson as a long-term substitute in the position of teaching assistant at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School effective September 20, 2013 through January 19, 2014 at the pleasure of the board, a salary of $127.89 per diem, 50% of Step 1 BA, $51,155 in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Paula Martin, teaching assistant at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Rena Gunther as the extra classroom central treasurer for the 2013-14 school year, stipend of $2,500 prorated effective November 13, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional coaches, advisors for the 2013-14 school year in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule, boys swimming, varsity, Heather Crowley, $4,381.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I don't believe we have anything for executive session. May I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? We're now adjourned. Thank you.